I will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education, which was duly noticed on April 23, 2021, through posting a notification of the press in accordance with Wisconsin State Statute 19.84. At this time, Mr. Millard, will you introduce pledge?
Uh, yeah, is, we gotta get him in here. Here we go. All right. So my pleasure this evening to introduce to you Mr. Matt Perrinboom, who is the Washington Elementary Principal. Matt has been working for the Janesville School District for past 18 years, and since 2019 has been the principal at Washington. Prior to accepting the position at Washington, served for six years at the Assistant Principal at Edison, and served as a teacher and dean of students at Franklin Middle School. Mr. Perrinboom, would you please introduce your student, please?
Thank you, Mr. Millard. Good evening, everybody, and it's my pleasure to introduce Aleah McGill. Aleah is a 4th grade student in Ms. Brown's class at Washington. She's an outstanding student, a hardworking, inquisitive, and responsible student. She's got a great attitude every day. She's a kind and caring friend, and she is certainly a great role model to her class. So I'd like to congratulate her for being the student she is, and for joining us here tonight to lead us in the pledge. Are you ready?
Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Before we move on to item 1.3, I'd like to publicly welcome our new commissioners and returning commissioner, Commissioner Audrey, Commissioners Paul and Hanawal. We appreciate you being here and certainly look forward to years of service. Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt the April 27, 2021 Board of Education agenda as presented? All those in favor? Motion passes. At this time, it's item 1.4, reorganization of Board of Education. At this time, I'll call for a nomination for president of the Board of Education.
I nominate Kathy Myers.
I nominate Kathy Myers.
Are there?
Who's second?
No second needed.
Okay, are there any further nominations for the President of Board of Education? And once again, are there any further nominations for the Board, President of the Board of Education? Hearing no others. Hearing none, nominations are closed. All of those in favor of the election of Commissioner Myers as President of the Board of Education? Please vote now. All right. Congratulations, President Myers. I get to turn over the folder and gavel to you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Continuing with nominations. I'm going to call for the nomination for Vice President of the Board of Education.
I'll nominate James Millard for Vice President.
Thank you. Okay, are there any further nominations for Vice President of the Board of Education? Are there any further nominations for Vice President for the Board of Education? Okay, hearing none, nominations are closed. All of those in favor of the election of Commissioner Millard as Vice President of the Board of Education signify by saying aye. Aye? Okay, congratulations, Commissioner. Okay, we've, we're going on to clerk.
I nominate Michelle Hayworth for Board Clerk.
Thank you, right. Do I hear any further nominations for Board Clerk of the Board of Education? Any further nominations for Clerk of the Board of Education? Okay, hearing none, nominations are closed. All of tho, all of those in favor of Commissioner Hayworth as Clerk of the Board of Education signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, congratulations. Okay, and I think we have one more here. We need treasurer.
I nominate Greg Audrey for treasurer.
Are there any further nominations for Treasurer of the Board of Education? Are there any further nominations for Treasurer of the Board of Education? Okay, hearing none, nominations are closed. All of those in favor of the election of Commissioner Audrey to the, as Treasurer of the Board of Education signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, congratulations. Okay. All right, is there, is there, there's nothing else I need to do?
Not for that.
Not for that? All right, very good. Okay, well, so next thing on our agenda is the safety message, and that's Commissioner Murray.
Why, thank you.
You're welcome.
Why, safety should be a concern to everyone on the job, in particular. Simply telling workers that they need to follow established policies set by management may not be the most effective way to get the message across. Sitting in a meeting to listen to accident statistics or learn about new procedures can be boring to employees. Getting the safety message across. There are a number of strategies that can be used to compose funny workplace safety tips. For some people, a simple rhyme is easy to remember and keeps the idea of safe, of staying safe on the job fresh in employees' minds. Here are some examples of safety rhymes. Falling objects can be brutal, so wear your hard hat to protect your noodle. I did not make these up. A spill or slip could mean a hospital trip. Working in a safe way means you will live to see another day. And the last one is, if you mess up, don't hesitate to fess up.
I like that one.
There you go. That's it.
Thank you very much. So we are up to the citizen comment section of our agenda here. I will note that we do have, we have received citizen comment in written form, and it will be posted virtually, right? It will go?
It doesn't get posted, it's just shared with the board.
Just shared with the board. Okay, thank you, thank you. So we do have comments, and the board is in receipt of those comments from Teresa Griffin. And so, thank you very much, and we will be sure to read that. Are there any other citizen comments tonight? No more? Okay, great. We're up to the student presenter, 1.7, to the Board of Education. That's welcome from Arise Virtual Academy, Malia Jordan, who is in 4th grade. Welcome.
This, this evening, I'd like to introduce Malia Jordan. She's a 4th grader with Arise Virtual Academy just for this year. She's unique in that she was a challenge student, and she came and we created a challenge program thanks to Alice DeGraff and Stacy Peterson. We brought in Scott for bringing in a challenge teacher. So we had a challenge group from 4th, 5th, and 6th grade. So she's going to be our presenter tonight. Ready?
Good evening, my name is Malia Jordan. I'm a 4th grader currently attending the challenge program at Arise Virtual Academy. I came to Arise this year due to the COVID situation. I have found I really like it. I have Ms. Ulring as a teacher. She is a great teacher and only a text away if you need help. She's very funny and listens to what we have to say. We have Google Mates with her every morning where we can ask for help if we need it. But we also interact with each other and play games or draw. We even had a talent show. Arise Challenge Program definitely has a larger workload than I was used to, but I enjoyed the fact that the curriculum challenged me. It made me work harder and manage my time better. You know my principal, Dr. Parr? I know Ms. Dave, my soccer coach, and Lena's grandpa. Dr. Parr is different from Dave, the soccer coach, as Dr. Parr has never blown a whistle and told me to get to the ball, spread out, or pass the ball to teammates. But as Dr. Parr has never brought treats either, so I'll have to work on him for that. This year has been quite the experience for our school. We peaked at 3,200 students. Over one-third of the students in Janesville joined Arise for at least some time this year. We have about 1,500 students right now, which includes statewide students. Though we are an online school, we have been doing the same things as the rest of the students. Testing for all, high school students get helping, help finding jobs, and for seniors, getting help enrolling in tech school or college. We are looking forward to a more normal year next year.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Wonderful. Oh, we have a question.
Can you introduce your family that's here today?
That's my mom and my brother Dane.
Welcome.
Welcome, welcome.
Keep up the good work, young lady.
Yeah, nice job. Nice job, good delivery.
Get some treats, Dane.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, now we're up to the consent agenda. We've had a request to pull out number 2.9, mental health grant. So, could, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exclusion of 2.9?
So move, second.
Okay, so we've got Greg and Kevin. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so now we are up to 2.9. The mental health grant. Commissioner Dahmerhausen, I think you had some words for that?
Yes, thank you. This, in, in our day and age, this is one of the more important things that be going through our educational system today. It's been there for many, many years. I remember in the 40s and 50s and 60s, we had the problems, but I didn't recognize them then. They weren't in the forefront. We always thought they were weird kids or something, or just got in trouble. So today, we've moved on a lot further than that. And our school district has been progressive for, I don't know, since I've been on the board when we had a lot of cutbacks back in 2010 and 11, threw it on their money. But we brought it up to, to date, bringing in a lot of social workers. We brought in counselors and other people that are needed in our, in our district. But we've been reintroduced of having to rebuild some areas today thanks to COVID and other issues, which I won't get into, that things are, you know, children, I have to be honest, I think they, pretty easy to get messed up today from a mental health standpoint, plus the kind of things that they already inherently have as they go through life that weren't their own, and these just compound them, these issues. So I just want, we as board members got this, so we, we know this, and they had spoke to the board before on this. But I think it's very important that we know that the district is working hard on it. I'm going to promote it as much as I can. Hopefully, if the grants don't come through and Esser becomes short, that we as a district can find some money to shore it up better. So I just want people to keep that in mind. I want those at home to be aware that our children are challenged. And if somebody doesn't, if we don't take care of it, who will? Parents will help, but they can only do so much. It's tough times, so. Anyway, I just wanted that to come out in front and people to notice it more. And that, and it isn't going to end tomorrow. It's going to be an ongoing thing, so. Thank you for listening.
So this is an action item two, right? So I still need to have approval. Commissioner, would you like to move to have this accepted then?
Oh, okay, I would. I make a motion that we accept this proposition, separate agenda item than the consent agenda. So I make that motion. We have a second.
Second to Commissioner Herta. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you very much. Okay, update on the school improvement plans with Allison DeGraff, Sally Pope, and Dennis Condon.
All right. Good evening. Tonight, we want to take the opportunity to share with you about our K-12 school improvement planning process in the school district of Janesville. We want to provide an overview of what that school improvement plan process is in our district and share with you a specific example of what a school improvement plan looks like in a building, and how we turn that school improvement plan into actionable steps on a daily basis in schools. So tonight, we have the principal from Monroe School, Sally Pope, and the academic learning coach, Dennis Condon, here with us tonight that will be able to share some specific examples for you about their school improvement planning process. The school improvement plan is, is research-based. It's a unique plan that we refine annually, and it really helps us define the targeted work that we need to do in schools to raise the achievement for all of our students. When we develop our school improvement plan, we use our promises as that roadmap for the school improvement plans. Specifically, we have our nine student and school success promises, and they really help guide the schools in developing their school improvement plan goals. And so, we have our district promises, which give us the roadmap for developing our school improvement plan in the schools, which lead and guide teachers in develop, into developing their classroom learning outcomes as well. And the purpose of our school improvement planning process is one of the single most important process that, that we will carry out during the school year by our school community. It's organized. All of our schools have a specific framework that they use, so all 21 schools in Janesville follow the same framework and school improvement planning process. And that process is really, again, to ensure the success for all of our students. So tonight, we want to take the opportunity to give you more specific information about what does a school improvement plan look like in a school, and how do we take it from a document that we develop to actionable steps in a building? And so, I'm going to have Sally Pope, our principal from Monroe, start to share that process.
Thank you. Congratulations to all of the new members here on the board. Welcome. It's nice to have you here. So really, our school improvement plan demonstrates the importance of our school community working together. And in order to do that, we need to get all of the stakeholders on the same page. In other words, we need all of our arrows pointing in the same direction for one common goal. And it's all connected. We start with the district improvement plan, and then we build our school improvement plan based off of the district improvement plan. Out of that comes the principal, myself, and my academic learning coach. We then develop our SLOs, which stands for Student Learning Outcomes, because we have one of those as well. So after the school improvement plan, we go ahead and build our SLO, and then that sets the framework for what teachers' SLO or student learning outcome will look like. So it's all connected. It starts at the top and funnels down. As you can tell, it's very specific, and all of the arrows are indeed pointing in the same direction to accomplish the single goal that we've set out to do based on our school improvement plan. The process of developing a school improvement plan is this. We create our building teams, which is typically built out of our leadership people that are on our IIC committees, which stands for Instructional Improvement Committees, which meet weekly. We review our data. All of our goals are data-driven, based on the data that we see from the prior year and where our needs of improvement are. We then, after we develop those goals, we share them out with the rest of the school, again, to make sure that all arrows are pointing in the same direction, and everyone is aware of what our main goal is for the year. We then meet with our learning and innovation team, and, which is Allison and, and her staff members, and we talk about how we came to these goals, so that they understand the data digging that we did and how we arrived at the goal that we've set for our school. After that, there is a district team that then looks at our school improvement plan and makes sure that all of the components that are needed are there, and that's that consistency piece that Allison spoke about, so that all 21 schools have that same structure in place, and all the components are there. Last but not least, we make sure we reflect on these goals. We tend to reflect on them more often than just the middle and the end of the year, but those are the two times of the year when we go back and look at our data. We look to see how we're progressing towards our end-of-the-year goal, and then make any changes that might be needed if we are not on track to accomplish that goal by the end of the year.
Good evening. As we continue on, what you're looking at here is a sample page from one of Monroe School's school improvement plans. And you can see how it's divided into three main components, where the action steps are generated for the school's stakeholders. And those areas are professional practices, instructional strategies, and PD and collaboration themes. Now here's the breakdown of those three key components. Professional practice is including the activities that the teacher does to participate in prior to working with students. It's the planning and preparation. That may be done alone or with their PLC, with their grade-level team, with the special education department. What can we do in order to prepare ourselves to teach the students? The educational strategies are the research-based activities that will be going on during those lessons with students. So that is with students. And then the professional development piece is, that's the direct relationship. We are preparing teachers through our trainings in order to have that relevant work done for their own thinking, for their own pedagogy, and then move that on to student learning. So we want to maximize all of our potential time to prepare and train teachers, but make sure it's lasering in to the goal that we would like to have as the outcome.
And so, as Dennis and Sally have mentioned, how do we ensure that all 21 of our schools have a school improvement plan in place that is data-driven with goals that specifically align to the promises and the basic, the needs in their, in their building? And so, we have two steps as a district that we take. One is that the learning and innovation team meets with all 21 schools. We go out to all of those buildings. They share the process and the data that they use to determine their goals and their plan, and we provide feedback, or share resources, or talk about how we can continue to support each building in their school improvement plan goals. The second piece that we have is that all of the school improvement plans are submitted to our superintendent and directors. So we use a form similar to this, where we look to make sure that all of those professional practices, instructional strategies, and professional development align, and that they have goals that are data-driven. And so, that's kind of our, our checkpoint as a district too, to ensure that we have all of our plans in place with goals aligned to the promises.
So the best example that we can give you about how a data-driven plan like this can show and, show improvement and result in positive outcomes is, I suspect why Allison asked us to join you tonight. And back in 2018, 19, Monroe School had a serious reality check. I'm going to tell you a little bit about what that looked like. So we started to notice that we had seen a drop in our school report card score from the year before. We also saw a decline in our ELA, English Language Arts, data from our STAR assessments, which we give three times a year. And also in our Journeys Benchmark Assessments, which is the district resource that we use. And those are assessments that are given at the end of each week to see how students are performing based on what they learned previous that week, and then we also- And then, we also have some benchmark tests that are done as cold reads, and we do those every so often after several units to see how students have done on those. And it was clear that we were not doing what we needed to, to meet the needs of our learners. And so, as a result, we needed to do something. Dennis is going to talk a little bit more about that piece.
So, yes, there are four critical questions that educators are looking at when their teams are together focusing on professional learning communities and that achievement data. And you can see from those four questions, it was obvious that Monroe needed to zero in on what will we do when they don't learn it after we reviewed all this data? We had a triangulation of data. We had three data points that proved that students were not progressing at the rate that we thought they should from the teaching and learning opportunities that we had. What were we doing to support ELA was not producing the results that we wanted, the quality results that we expected? We had to review our current model and refine our practices to see positive changes in our results. It was time to, so to speak, change the water. If we were to do what we always have done, we will get what we've always gotten, and we knew that that was not setting right with our Monroe spirit.
Okay, so how do you go about making a systematic change of this magnitude, especially when the school year was already underway? It required some heavy lifting, and it required a pretty clear and concise action plan. And that is what the school improvement plan allowed us to do, is to come up with that actionable plan. So, we needed to make a shift from the basal reader approach, which is what we were doing through our Journeys resource. And we realized, after consulting with Allison and doing some of our own research, that we needed to change to more of that balanced literacy approach, which the Journeys resource also had as one of its components, but we just weren't using it. And we knew that that could be our ticket, that we were missing some of those critical parts to the balanced literacy framework. So, teachers were going to need some support to do this. I can tell you, Dennis and I maybe didn't make a lot of friends through this process because it was hard work and because it was the middle of the year, and we really needed to move forward, whether we were making friends or not, because that was the right thing to do. We were all working hard, but it wasn't the right work. And so, we needed to get on the right path and be doing the right work. So, teachers were going to need support with this, and so, what we needed to do was provide professional development for them around the balanced literacy framework, which we did, along with gathering the resources and tools that they would need to accomplish this shift. There was no time to waste, and so, we developed a really tight timeline for implementation. After our first pulse check with our STAR assessment in November, that was another piece of triangular data that we said, okay, we can't wait another year. We can't wait any longer to make a shift because it's not working. So, from the time, from November to January, we implemented in January. We made this whole shift in that amount of time. So, in order to ensure then that all classrooms were taking part in this change, Dennis and I did learning walks in each classroom and provided feedback to teachers immediately on what we were seeing and how we thought the implementation was going. We also supported coaching for those teachers that were in need of a little bit of extra support. We continued to support teachers throughout the year with additional professional development along the way. We didn't just say, you're going to do this and then walk away. We knew we needed to continue to support them with that professional development and additional tools and resources. We also continued learning walks throughout the remainder of the year. So, what are the results, you ask? Well, we found that when we looked for solutions and focused on solutions rather than excuses, we saw significant results. So, after implementing this more balanced literacy framework and getting everyone on board and all the arrows pointing in the right direction, we saw an increase in our STAR assessments. We saw an increase in the Forward Wisconsin scores, and we saw an increase in both our achievement and our growth. So, that was an important piece as well, not just one or the other. Was making gains, but we gained in both the achievement and growth areas. As a result, we were able to increase our overall accountability rating on our next school report card by a full level. So, we were able to jump a full level. We not only gained credibility, Dennis and I, with our staff when that happened, and we were, woo, amen, so happy. We had quite the celebration, but... So, we gained some credibility with our staff, but they were thrilled. They were thrilled to see the success that their students were having when they looked at their student data at the end of the year. So, we knew we had to keep that train moving, and we did, and we continued to see great growth and achievement in our ELA scores. As a matter of fact, it was so successful, this plan of action that we put together, we used something very similar this year when we were implementing the new Bridges resource for math. So, we kind of took this action plan, and Dennis and I said, okay, let's see if we can get the same results from this plan that we had. So, through the professional development, the tools and resources, doing the learning walks, following up with feedback to staff, and we have seen, I think, as you all know, some really great results with our Bridges resource as well.
So, as you can see from the presentation so far, our SIP really is at the forefront of what we are doing in our building. It helps reflect... Excuse me, we are reflecting on it frequently, and we have it as a living document. It's our playbook. It's used in our agendas for our leadership team, which was IIC, which Sally had referred to earlier. And then, Sally and I are constantly, in our weekly meetings, referring back to the SIP, how well have we met our goal so far? What PD have we accomplished? And what do we still have to do for PD in order to continue on for that successful end product? We also review it and reflect it formally, sometimes during the year, with our grade-level teams. We have data retreats, where they are analyzing, are all students growing in all of our segregated groups? Are all the different populations of students moving at the level that they should be to help with our growth and our achievement? And in the end, we hope to measure the success and the growth of our goal and hopefully achieve that goal. And if not, that goal will stay on, and we'll tweak it to see how can we continue to improve on that goal for the next year? We don't want to put that goal aside because the new school year is coming. How do we build off of that goal and maybe even stretch ourselves to a higher level in that goal? Keep on making...
...improvement plan and how it really drives the work that they do to support student success. And I would also want to add to, you know, where they were really focused on results and not excuses, and one of the things that's changed at Monroe, too, has been the demographics. And so, when they saw a decline in their scores as well, they also saw increase in their number of students economically disadvantaged. So, many times, that could be used as an excuse, but they didn't allow that, and they really dug into what are the action steps we need to take to move our students forward. So, I want to thank them for sharing their story tonight and giving you a glimpse into those school improvement plans. So, thank you, and we want to take a minute if anybody has any questions.
I don't have any questions, but I want to make... Well, I do have one question. While, and particularly at Monroe, while this was going on, do you recall what percentage of the kids were virtual, by chance?
It was prior to... This was the year prior to when we went virtual.
Oh, okay. But nonetheless, then, I... Just to watch how you two guys worked together is wonderful. You know, I had grandkids go to your school, which I just... And I know personally that Monroe was a leader in supporting students staying in the classroom, so I just wanted to make sure I thanked you for that, and you guys are doing great things over there. Very proud of you. So, thank you.
Any other questions?
I was just curious as to how you're handling the COVID thing. How's it... I mean, did you have, other than the obvious changes, you know, what other kinds of things have... How have your numbers and your improvement been affected? And, you know, what kind of help do you think you need?
Well, what I can say is, I think we are all very thankful that we have been able to be face-to-face all year. I think it's been incredibly important for our students and our staff, and I think we've been able to make gap-closing accomplishments based on having them there face-to-face. Did we see some holes from last spring? Of course. But what we found is that we've been able to fill those holes pretty quickly, and we've seen some really great results. That's because teachers have chosen to follow all of the protocols put in place, and when we'd be a little bit more nervous than the kids were, we got the kids in the door, and they were like, woo-hoo, you want me to just wear this mask and stay in my seat more? When's lunch or recess? They didn't really care. They were just happy to be there, see their friends, see their teacher, and continue learning. And so, they are so much more resilient, I think, than we are, but, boy, we've just followed all the protocols that have been put in place, and we've seen some really great results, and the kids are happy, and they're learning, and we just... I don't know, Dennis, what am I missing? I just think we've seen some great success.
Wonderful. More than we thought, we didn't know what to expect this year, and it's been just wonderful to watch the students grow. Once again, we did a November pulse check, and we saw the growth there. From September, we're like, wow, we're seeing enough. And then, from November to January, again, we saw that growth. At that point, we were on track to meeting all of our school improvement goals this year as of January, so we were very...
Always get together as a group on the floor and do some of the workplaces, but they are resilient, and those teachers have found ways to make that happen, be it digitally, be it with their own manipulative packs, so they're not sharing with other kids. But I can tell you with 100% certainty that the learning has continued, and that's with all the efforts of the great teachers that we have at Monroe.
Thank you.
Yes.
I just want to say thank you for coming tonight and giving us that inside look. We hear a lot about district improvement plans, school improvement plans, but for me personally, it's nice that you painted the picture of what it actually looks like. You broke it down, so we could actually see as board members, when Allison comes up and talks about school improvement plans, what that actually looks like. You know, I remember back in my teaching days, you had to tell kids what good behavior looked like, and you really showed me what a school improvement plan looked like. So, I appreciate that. And in addition, I just really love the fact that you didn't reinvent the wheel. Like, when Bridges came through, you took what you already knew worked, maybe tweaked it a little bit, but used that same process to work in another content area. So, just kudos to you for that leadership. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. And I'll say, too, it was when Allison asked us to do this, I'm like, oh, so you want to talk about that year? I'm like, I don't know if I really want to talk about it. Process changes hard.
Sure.
And... But we knew if we didn't do something differently, we would continue to get what we always were getting.
Well, thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right. So, now, we have 3.2, update on athletics, considering approval of a change in safety protocols for the athletic season.
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioner Myers, President Myers. Congrats again. I'm here to present on behalf of the Athletics Department for Ben and Clayton, some changes that we'd like to propose, given the seasons right now and the sports and where they're at in terms of outside. One of the biggest changes, as you can see through the memo, is that we'd like to change the spectator protocol and increase and allow more spectators, as outlined in the memo, based on the different sports. For example, outside, as long as people are socially distanced, they're okay to be outside. In terms of spectator sports, for example, football, softball, those others that have bleachers and such, we would allow four spectators per athlete in order to just allow people to enjoy the sports and hopefully move towards a more normal situation as we move through things. Additionally, you would see in that memo that we talked about the use of masks. We would like the flexibility and the... It allows us to move quicker on our feet when we look at and dealing with those situations. You may not be aware, but currently, the Big Eight Conference does and has voted that all participants will wear masks during all competitions, regardless of the type of competition. We are following those protocols as such. We have non-conference competitions. We would ask that perhaps if the conditions... Is your approval of our new spectator protocols, as well as that flexibility as it comes to the COVID safety protocols in the future?
Surprisingly, I got a phone call already after just being sworn in yesterday from a citizen who wanted to discuss this, who had read about this already. Their concern was specifically related to this Friday night's Parker-Craig game. Reading the proposal, it certainly makes sense. I strongly support it. However, given the fact that the Parker-Craig game is probably the highlight of these this year, and that half the opponents, depending on who you're looking at, will be sitting on the... There could be some flexibility to increase from four spectators per athlete for, what do I want to say, inner-city athletics, when it's a Craig-Parker event. Because, for instance, if we've got four, lots of times, you're talking, you're excluding, you know, a couple of members of a family, maybe grandparents, who this is the only game that they're interested in. And so, I was wondering if we could amend this to at least look at the Parker-Craig contest to, say, six or eight.
That's certainly within the board's purview, that you can actually make, make those recommendations.
Are you, are you, are you, you're finished right now?
I am.
Okay. Commissioner Myers? So is it true that the Big Eight Conference has jurisdiction over to what we do? Other, this only relates to masks? Is that the only thing that they're saying?
Currently, that's the one that's been highlighted the most. We, the conference votes on the different protocols and the Big Eight Conference did vote on that all participants must wear masks at conference meetings.
That's, that's the only, so if they're the, they're the one making the decision on this and it's just masks, it doesn't relate to spectators or anything like that, is that right?
Correct. Many schools, and I think we outlined that in here as well, there's several school districts that have their own spectator policies. We're in line with most, but we are asking to expand that tonight.
So I agree with Commissioner Hanawal, and I'm willing to go even further than that, but knowing that the Big Eight Conference says you got to wear masks, all right, there's nothing, I guess we can do about that. I don't like it. I mean, playing baseball with a mask on? But anyway, I'd like to make a motion that we amend this proposal to reflect that all proposed athletics from February 28th through July 3rd be governed by social distance spectator policy. So in other words, any, my intent is any of these athletic events would be the same as the golf, tennis, soccer, or cross-country. There'd be no limit to it. You just have to practice social distancing spectators as, as the others that I mentioned. That's my motion, if you understand.
So can we clarify that? So you're proposing that all outdoor athletics have no restrictions on the number of attendees?
Yes. Thank you.
And there is no amendment to it, he's making that motion right now?
Thank you.
Right, we don't have a motion on the floor?
We have now.
Yeah, I mean, up to the original. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, but we need a second.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a second from Commissioner Hanawal. Any discussion on that? Oh, hands. Okay. Okay, I'll start with Commissioner Thomas.
Okay, simple clarification. You said social distancing, masks also for that, the spectators? It's a pretty simple requirement.
I'm not, I'm not, well, if you're asking me, my intent of the motion is just whatever this means here, social distance spectators. I don't
It does say, coaches, spectators, official team event must be masked at all times. You're just changing it to the number of people that can be there, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, the other part stay.
You're not, you're not dealing with masks at all. That's not, that's not the intent.
No.
That's not what
I want to make sure it's all, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I saw Michelle's hand.
I agree with that, Kevin. I appreciate you bringing that up. And I also, I think this way it would allow us to be, go beyond the football game, because maybe, you know, the cross-rivalry soccer game or whatever it is. I like that. And, but then I wonder, does it open it up to the graduation ceremonies we have coming as well? So just something to think about. I know this is athletics, I'm not trying to change anything, but you are going to change, it could potentially then change what happens June 3rd and 4th. So, anyway, thank you for bringing up, Kevin.
That's a good point.
Did you want to respond to that or did you want to?
I disagree with Commissioner Hayworth. It would make us, force us to relook at what that graduation ceremony would look like at this time. We try to remain in line with, with that.
So my question, so I understand what your motion is, as you said, it's socially distanced, so you'll still have the masks, you're just not limiting number of spectators, but they still have to be socially distanced, correct?
Can you answer that for me, what that means?
Yes, so if they're, even when they're outside, obviously families stick by each other, but if they're, say, I don't know, Commissioner Audrey, I would be six feet away from him.
So my question is, is who's going to take care of that?
We, it would be the honor system. I'll be honest with you, we would do our best to police that, but it would be impossible to do that all the time.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I suppose that goes for, like, if they're at Monterey Stadium and then everything fills up, there really is not going to be, especially during those intercity rivalries, it's not going to be possible to actually enforce social distancing.
Correct. Correct.
Yeah, correct. We'd have to look at our capacity, square footage, that kind of thing.
People walking around like this, again, as Scott said, you know, we're going to rely on an honor system, but I've always been graduated for some time now, but when's the last time the entire bleachers on both sides was filled? You know, I don't think we're going to have to be concerned about that.
It happens.
Other thoughts on this?
Yeah, I just, I just want to add one thing. With masks, according to the state, it means mask over the nose and the mouth, not under the nose or anything. So just hopefully, I know we can't enforce them directly, but we can do a little bit of encouragement or a lot of encouragement, whatever it is. I'm all for opening it up more. I'd like to see her, start to feel a little more normal. So, thank you.
My logical mind starts to kick in and I think, you know, I pitched your Monterey Stadium on Friday if this were to be approved, and a lot of, a lot of the people that would come down are students who aren't vaccinated. So I think that is contradictory to what we're doing at the high schools. And I would hate that because we reduced the number or eliminated the number of spectators, I'm all, I'm all for like because it was in town. But I, I strongly believe we're going down a different path because it's contradictory what we're doing and what we, as a board, have put in place at the high schools to socially distance our students.
I just have, I just have a question. Scott, do they still sell tickets or how do they?
Yes, they do. We still, well, we assign, we assign so many per athlete, obviously, in that we have people collecting at the door there or the venue.
One point I make about the, the students is, you know, A, they're meeting in other places anyway, but also, you know, Fauci's even said the kids have the miniscule, was his word this week, chance of spreading it or contracting it, and they're outside. So it's different than being in the school building.
Okay, any further comments? Do we have a motion? Yes.
Yeah, just one thing. I'd like to hear what we're voting on. We've said a lot of things, so.
Okay. The motion as stands is a motion for no limit on the number of spectators.
Hello, I am concerned as well, along what Commissioner Herta has expressed. I'm concerned about the mixed messages that it could send our students about having different expectations in different environments. I would hate for there to be an outbreak that was traced back to significantly lax precautions. I also think that we should consider what the capacity limits are at Monterey Stadium and our participation should reflect what we are allowed to offer in our community in terms of population of participants and also just that location in general.
Can I amend that motion?
What?
I want to, I just want to amend
I do.
On the amendment to the motion.
Yeah, okay.
I just, I'm sorry.
Oh, I saw Commissioner Hanawal first.
My point is a logistics one, if we start talking about eight, and I know I started talking about six to eight, but then who is going to be responsible for counting one, two, three, eight, eight for Carl, eight for Mr. Hanawal, and all of a sudden we take it to six or eight? And I've got a couple others and I see a friend down there and I say, hey, can they go into your group? You know, it's going to be tough to go count, start counting eight and asking somebody at the gate to be accountable for how many people are in this party and did you count? And I, I think it's a logistic nightmare.
So we have, we have systems in place to account for that. We do run off tickets for the kids and they turn them in as they go. So you're right, it would be, it is more difficult when you, obviously you add numbers to that, but we do have systems in place.
Anybody else on this? Okay.
Do you want to do roll call?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll read the amended motion and then we'll do a roll call. The amended motion is a motion to limit the number of tickets to eight per athlete for all outside athletic events following social distancing and masking guidelines. Is that correct? Roll call vote. Greg Audrey?
Yes.
Carl Dummerhausen?
Yes.
Hanawal?
No.
Hayworth?
No.
Herta?
Yes.
Mallard?
No.
Murray?
No.
Paul?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
That passes 5-4.
All right, so That is now the motion.
The motion. Okay. Okay, the original motion. All right, is there
Logic being talked about, but this, this is outside activities. We're not in the gyms, we're not in the buildings. So it's okay for some of these sports to have unlimited spectators, but not for others. So to me, that doesn't make any logical sense either. A football game down at Monterey Stadium, I mean, that place is big and outside. The soccer field over at Craig? There's plenty of space for people to spectate there. So, anyway, that's enough on that. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Can I add just one, if, to whatever the board decides in terms of spectators and such, I would like to make sure we include the fact that you're allowing us some flexibility to go with, as the restrictions change, if you allow us to do that, rather than having to ask the board. Each time, I would add, add that to this decision tonight, please.
Anything else? Okay, so do you want to do a roll call on this one too?
I can do a roll call. I just want to confirm with legal, the amended motion did not specify that. Do we need a separate motion for that?
Yes, for what Scott just said, you should have a second motion altogether.
Okay, so we'll, we'll go ahead and do a roll call on the amended motion that was approved.
Okay.
And then we'll need to have another motion.
Okay. Okay.
So is everybody comfortable with the motion on the floor? Or do you want me to re-read it?
Yes.
We're doing the secondary, the second motion.
Would you, would you mind?
Okay, the motion on the floor is to limit the number of tickets to eight per athlete for all outside athletic events following social distancing and masking guidelines.
Okay, is there an allowing?
That is not part of this motion.
Yeah, that's
Okay, I'm comfortable.
No, I got lost too.
Are we ready to vote?
Yep.
Dummerhausen?
Yes.
Hanawal?
No.
Murray?
No.
Paul?
Yes.
Audrey?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Vote passes eight to one.
Thank you.
To pivot or whatever your verbiage is, Scott.
How about to adjust safety protocols?
To adjust safety protocols.
We have a second on that. Thank you. Okay, any further discussion on this?
I'm just, I just want clarification, Scott. You said recommendations from the Big Eight or other health departments. So what takes precedent, I guess? Because again, my point earlier was the CDC came out this morning and said groups can gather, especially outside, unless you're at a packed stadium or a concert, but you can gather in measurement, the, the Big Eight, public health of Rock County, the CDC. So we'll be using both.
Anything else on this? Okay, let's vote, let's do one more roll call, okay?
Okay, I'll read the motion again.
Thank you.
Motion to allow administration flexibility to adjust safety protocols as designated by by the Big Eight or the health departments.
Thank you.
Hanawal?
Yes.
Hayworth?
Yes.
Herta?
Yes.
Mallard?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Audrey?
Yes.
Dahmerhausen?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
That passes nine, zero.
Thank you.
Of the, of the new board? Ooh, it should have been confetti.
I know.
I should have, I just should have, okay. Right, right. All right, thank you very much. Okay, we're on to 3.3, Consider Approval to Reopen District Facilities to Public Use.
Motion for approval.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Murray and a second by Commissioner Mallard. Okay, any discussion?
Now to Assistant Superintendent Garner's comments, right? We essentially follow CDC, Rock County, right? It's the trickle-down effect. CDC to the state, state to the Rock County Health Department. You know, we're subject to them, obviously, because we're in Rock County, right? So as those loosen up, so too will any restrictions that we ask our groups to abide by. It's, and I think also to Assistant Superintendent Garner's, we live in a very dynamic, right, environment right now. So when will the county make decisions? As soon as they do, then that allows us rather than coming back to the board. So we'll make and follow those recommendations, excuse me, as well.
Any questions?
Yeah, a question, it kind of hit me when you said it, Dan. I live up by Marshall, and Marshall.
... of the board also referenced, you know, how do we really begin to?
Yeah.
Right, so we're really dependent upon the organizations, whether it's youth soccer, youth football, youth baseball, and youth softball, and whomever is using our facilities, right, to essentially abide by. We don't have the manpower or the staffing, right, to go about, you know? It's not, you know, the Pfizer form. You know, it's where they have ushers going around reminding everyone and they're able to zip tie seats. Do recognize and I think are empathetic to the staff who are working in buildings, right? Sure, all of a sudden in an indoor facility, there's a bazillion people. You know, what recourse do we have? Is that's reported? So again, it's really, it's an honor system, as was referenced.
I'm, I'm assuming that whoever's organized things, signed up to have the space or whatever, would be made aware of. We have set some kind of guidelines and we're trusting them to enforce them.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to verify with the, and I know what the memo said, but it's only for groups and organizations, it's not for individuals. Because I know typically, we would have our buildings open for individuals to, whether it's walking the track in field houses or using equipment. So I'm just verifying that.
Yep, correct. It's really those organized community groups. You know, if fourteen people show up to play. For us, you may recall even at the beginning of COVID, right? So we were putting stakes out into the playgrounds and, you know, because we were that anxious.
Any others? Okay, I think we're ready to, let's see here. This is an action item. So we have a motion on the floor. So I don't think anybody needs the motion reread, right? We're good? Okadoki. All right, let's, let's go then. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? All opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously, unanimously, nine, zero. Okay, and don't go anywhere, right? You're not going anywhere. District-wide facilities planning update, Mr. McCray.
Sure, just to steal perhaps a little bit of Commissioner Audrey's update on the Finance Committee. We are in the process of initiating our first bid package relative to our secure sequencing. So you may recall, we have six buildings in bid package one, all right? And the scope of the work at each building will vary. Bid packages went out on April 12th. So Dave Leader, my bring that to the bid opening on the 29th. Something to keep in mind is we have three bid packages as part of the secure sequencing. Each will be a bid package in and of itself. So if you win bid package one for a particular scope of work, it does not guarantee you and you will have to rebid on bid package two. So that essentially ensures, you know, an open marketplace, if you will, relative. So we're still working on kind of stepping away from the secure sequencing. So Mr. Leader and a little bit of Mr. Farwell and some others are working on putting together the big package for our boiler systems that we've identified at six locations. So we hope to get those out, if you will, in the coming weeks, just in time for the cooling season. That's the ideal. If we don't meet that target, please keep in mind, although our boilers are aging, we have redundancy at our buildings. So should a boiler go down, we have a secondary boiler. Now, that's not to say that the work isn't needed, right? But it does bear us some time. After a capital referendum, we really have three years in which to commence the work. We're not going to take that long. But again, we have a small facilities management crew. And so focusing on our secure sequence has really kind of been on our forefront.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much. Spent some time thinking about the committees and I reached out to people about, about possible assignment. Our Commissioners Paul and Herta. And then on our Benefits Committee, we have Commissioner Murray as the chair and Commissioner Hanawal and Commissioner Dahmerhausen also on the committee. Our CISA II representative is Commissioner Dahmerhausen. Our Title I rep is Commissioner Herta. Our JACPTA liaison is Commissioner Paul. And our WASBA, our WASBA delegate is me. And, and Commissioner Herta will be our alternate in case I get hit by a bus or something like that, okay? We, we haven't decided yet about our TIF representative. So in the interim, we will have the CFO attend those meetings on behalf of the district. And so does anybody have any, that requires action. So. Yeah. Oh, okay, it says action here. I thought I was. Great, well, moving on then. Finance, buildings, and grounds, Commissioner Audrey.
I have to regroup after the Supreme comment. Oh, so the you know, I wouldn't normally mention the safety message, but Kevin's message was pretty much on point. And the one thing I would add is, quite frankly, safety is personal. So it's, it's what you do for you. We have to pay attention to others, but it's most important what you do for you. And that's something that we have to keep in mind. Couple items to note here. The capital maintenance projects, major, if anybody's seen the storefront at Craig, it looks awesome. It was replaced during spring break. And there's a couple more projects left to be done at Marshall and some brickwork at Parker. No reason to mention secure pathways. Budget development update. You know, the biggest part of the budget Mr. Garner gave to us. But one of the things that I really asked is, can we get back on schedule? Kind of, well, I won't say post. The naming rights, I think we are looking at doing a couple different things with that. The them review the financials leading into the referendum. So we're going to, we, yeah, okay. Mr. McCray and staff will pull various naming and sponsorship programs from other districts, vet those a bit and come with ideas and really look to a committee to review that. Community, community to review that. And then they can make a recommendation, obviously not binding, but to the board or committee for a further discussion. We thought that would factor in many more of the interested parties than just whatever the board thought was best. Another one is the student transportation proposal. We will be bringing that our next board meeting. I think RFPs were due. And what came in, we won't need to review that next week. We had considered committee to review it beforehand and we'll just wait until the next board and everybody can look at that. Looks like now, nice and bright. And we can just scroll through them, Patrick. Just, just capturing, I mean, if you remember what it looked like before the work was done, it was more dungeonous, dark, not very bright. So great work. It's inviting, it's colorful, it's branded for the school. Really outstanding work. Well, this would be a model, and I know Mr. McCray would hate, hates for me to say it, but it'll be a model going forward for as we look for improvements to not just take care of the functionality, but actually make it look much more inviting. So I thought I would share that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Dahmerhausen?
I just want to add one thing, Greg. You did a wonderful job on that, thank you, especially at Adams. But they also had tremendous amount of health, health helps and safety. One was the bathrooms were tremendously updated, which some of the young ladies might appreciate more and even the men. And we added exits to be able to get out in case of something happening that they need to get out better. So multiple purpose, so.
The three bid projects are the security, the boilers, and then what's the third?
So the that needs to be done. Really been focusing on the work for this summer, but then we're going to dive into the boilers.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, great. Moving on here, we have future meeting dates, times, and agenda items. Do we, do we have anything yet?
Just our upcoming meetings in May, which would be on Tuesday, May 11th at 6:00 PM for the regular board meeting and Tuesday, May 25th at 6:00 PM for the regular board meeting, both here at the Educational Services Center.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's the end of our agenda. We are adjourned. Thank you. Best job. Thank you.